Meeting for July 10th. Wow. Select Board Member Green is, I was gonna say, missing in action. No, he's not missing. He's excused tonight. He's in Montreal on holiday.
Very important business.
Yeah. So, he won't be here tonight, but we can do our business without him. So, we have, we're going to take an item out of order, so we won't subject family members of the firefighters to our routine other business. And we have some promotions in the fire department, and I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you and the select board for allowing us to be here tonight for this wonderful occasion on behalf of the fire department, and also for taking us a little bit out of order so that we can get the folks back to celebrate their, these promotions. At the June 26 meeting of the select board, this body unanimously approved the fire department's request to promote three vacant officer positions internally. After the approval, the fire department administration reviewed the standings on the current civil service list and conducted interviews of the requisite eligible candidates for promotion. Tonight, we respectfully ask the select board to take the vote to promote the following three individuals. Lieutenant Peter Hopkins to captain, firefighter Finn Harrigan Anderson to lieutenant, and firefighter Brian Bergeron to lieutenant. Lieutenant Hopkins, soon-to-be captain Hopkins, assuming a favorable vote, is a resident of Brookline, graduate of Brookline High School in a class of 1982. He was appointed to the fire department in 2001 and was subsequently promoted to lieutenant in 2008. He is a state-certified EMT, and he has currently commanded ladder one covering the Coolish Corner area and beyond. He has been a temporary captain of engine five for a good deal of time, serving in that capacity in the temporary role. He has a bachelor's of science degree in engineering technology, and he is an outstanding leader by all accounts. For lieutenants, we have firefighter Finn Harrington Anderson, who was appointed to the fire department in 2010. He is a firefighter, 1-2 certified firefighter through the State Board of Certification. He has, also has some experience as a temporary lieutenant, serving in that capacity. He's a state-certified EMT and has completed degrees in his educational endeavors as well. Along with both firefighter Harrington and lieutenant Hopkins, last but certainly not least firefighter Brian Bergeron, who was also appointed in May of 2010, classmates getting promoted together tonight, hopefully to the rank of lieutenant, also a firefighter, 1-2 certified firefighter by the State Board of Certification, and he has a bachelor of arts with a concentration in business. He has also served in that capacity as a temporary lieutenant and has been highly recommended by his superiors for promotion tonight, as well as the other members you see before you with their wonderful families here this evening. So, I would ask that the board consider these promotions and hopefully vote in favor of their promotions tonight.
I think the only discussion is to congratulate the soon-to-be captain, I shouldn't presume the vote. So, why don't we do the vote, and then we can do some congratulation, then we can do the pinning. So, why don't, so I will move that we authorize the following promotions within the fire department. Lieutenant Peter Hopkins to captain, firefighter Finn Harrigan Anderson to lieutenant, and firefighter Brian Bergeron to lieutenant. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, you're now officially promoted.
Unanimous.
Before we do the pinning, I'll just extend my congratulations to you three gentlemen, and also to the families, and thank the families for putting up with what we demand from our firefighters, which we know is a lot. And we demand a lot, and we get a lot. And I'm very proud to be a part of this promotion ceremony. So, I thank you all, and I thank the families, too.
I'll join the chair in congratulating both you three gentlemen and thanking your families for putting up with the demands of being in the firefighting business. I've been sort of riveted over the past couple of days by this situation in Thailand, and it's, it's sort of crystallized for me the importance of training, preparedness, and dedication to work. And that thought is especially at the forefront of my mind, following some work that our chair and the town administrator did just a couple of weeks ago out on Moon Island, where they, they got some firsthand experience in what it's like to be a firefighter. So, thank you for dedicating yourselves to this profession, keeping all of us safe, and best of luck in the future. We hope you remain safe, and there are more congratulations and good deeds to happen in the future. Thank you.
Well, I will also congratulate you, and ditto everything that the chair and select person Franco have said. I'd also like to add, thank you for bringing your families, and especially your children. In this job, we don't often get a chance to see kids, but it reminds us of why we're all here and what we're doing. And we're working toward keeping our kids safe, educating them well, to hopefully that they will grow up to be productive citizens, and they all look very promising, so thank you.
All of the above. I choose to live in Brookline because of the community and because it's a, it feels like it's a safe place. So, thank you for your contributions, and thank you to your families.
Chief?
Mr. Chair, I want to thank the board again for the unanimous consent in this promotion. And, you know, we strive to promote the very best of the best, and these folks have gone above and beyond in their deliberations, as well as their education and training, and on all the hundreds of hours that they put into the process of examination and interview. And it really is a proud moment for me, as the new chief, to have you three gentlemen as the first members that I get to promote, along with the select board, in this position as chief, and I want to thank you for everything that you do and everything that you will do. Captain Peter, soon-to-be, well promoted already, but will be assigned as of next Monday, Peter Hopkins, to the rank of captain. And the captain's position is one of senior management, and it's something that Chief Flaherty and I and the other deputy chiefs rely on, as that, that level of management, where we look for guidance and we look for their input to help us to develop policy and to move our department forward. And I look forward to working with newly-promoted Captain Peter Hopkins in his position. And captain, if you would come up with your, I think your son Roy's gonna pin you, okay? Also firefighter with the Brookline Fire Department.
There'll be more opportunities for pictures.
The next up on the docket tonight is newly-promoted Lieutenant Finn Harrigan Anderson. I had the opportunity with Chief Flaherty to interview these two fine gentlemen for the position of lieutenant, and to really get to kind of delve down into the way that they think about their next step in becoming a company officer. And any of the firefighters and officers in this room know that the company officer position is absolutely the most critical and pivotal position within the fire department in terms of the way that we interact with the public. They're often the first connection that the public has on a call for service in their worst day, and these gentlemen will now be the face of the Brookline Fire Department and of this town to our constituents, and I have the utmost confidence in each one of them. They comported themselves with great professionalism, and I'm also looking forward to being part of their developmental process and working with them. And so with that, I would like to ask newly-promoted Lieutenant Finn Harrigan Anderson, who will be pinned by his daughter. And certainly, last but not least, firefighter, now lieutenant Brian Bergeron, who will be pinned by his wife, and I think in tow, his son, correct?
Emmett.
Yeah, the daughter. Oh, she's there, yes. I didn't see her. Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Who's gonna take this off? You gotta take that off. He's gonna go way, way, way. Can we pull that right?
[inaudible]
Wonderful. And I guess now we'll have a couple of opportunities for the folks to get pictures with the select board, or if they, if they show choose, it's up to you guys. We have Chief Flaherty and I, and whoever you want. If you've got better things to do, we won't take it personally.
[laughing]
We're like boogers.
[laughing]
Congratulations. Thank you.
Wonderful. And I guess now we'll have a couple of opportunities for the folks to get pictures with the select board, or if they, if they show choose, it's up to you guys. We have Chief Flaherty and I, and whoever you want. If you've got better things to do, we won't take it personally.
[laughing]
Now, I get to go downstairs.
Yes, yes.
I live in town. Great. I know we are rich. This is my office, obviously.
That's hilarious.
I know.
The hair for me, I don't like it.
You have to be careful, Heather, we're gonna get out of stories.
[inaudible]
That's hilarious.
I know.
The hair for me, I don't like it.
You have to be careful, Heather, we're gonna get out of stories.
[inaudible]
That's cool. Sounds really cool.
[inaudible]
I'll send my three.
[inaudible]
Okay. I suggest the chief to move his people.
Okay. Now, we'll get back to our normal business. We, for those of you who just joined us, we moved, there was a promotion ceremony, we just moved that up to the front, so we could play to the audience. They were here and ready to go. So, we have some routine business, so we'll just, we'll do that, we'll get through it pretty quickly, and then we'll get on with the calendar. So, some announcements, I have a few. We received a letter from Mass Housing issuing a project eligibility letter on the Hampton Court project that was, that's being proposed by Chestnut Hill Realty at the corner of Beacon and St. Paul. And last night, there was a meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board, and there were some discussions of some potential alternate projects that could occur on that site. So, this is a work in progress. Maybe we'll get a 40B there, but maybe we won't. So, we'll see what happens. More to come, stay tuned. There's a number of events happening sponsored by the Recreation Department, starting every, every Wednesday, there's a free summer music series. I think we've been having this every year for quite a while. It used to be at the Emerson Playground, but last few years, and this year also, it's happening at Cypress Park. So, tomorrow night, and it's at 6:00 PM every Wednesday between now and, between tomorrow and April 15th.
August 15th.
August 15th, April, gosh. And there's Angel Wagner and Grupo Fantasia, a Latin-style band, is tomorrow. And then there's Family Flicks and Fun in the Park, and this is Lawn Bachi and Outdoor These are movies at Waltstein Playground at Dean and Beacon Street. And this two, this is, well, one of them has already occurred. So, these are Friday evenings, so the next one is this Friday. And the Disney Pixar movie Coco is being shown, and then Lawn Bachi and Outdoor Games, two hours before the movies, and the movies start 30 minutes after dusk. So, this, this Friday, and then next Friday is the Disney film Cars, and then a special Saturday showing, the 28th of July, The Lion King. Pretty cool stuff.
Yeah.
More announcements? Tuesday, July 17th, Mastod is hosting a meeting to talk about the Commonwealth Avenue project. Commonwealth Avenue is going to be closed. This is over by BU. It's kind of where Carlton Street hits, and the BU Bridge hits Commonwealth Avenue, and they're replacing the Commonwealth Avenue viaduct that goes over the Mass Pike. It affects Commonwealth Avenue, the Green Line. It's a very, very complicated intersection, and this is the second year this is happening. Last year, I thought, I thought Mastod did a really fine job getting the word out and creating alternate ways of getting through the area. So, this is a replay of what happened last year. The meeting is Tuesday, the 17th, at the BU College of General Studies, which is at 871 Commonwealth Avenue. Then there's another, there's a redo of that meeting at the Morse Auditorium on the other side, 40 Granite Street in Cambridge.
And both those meetings are at 6:30 in the evening.
Right. The shutdown is from July 26th to August 11th. So, if you're, that, those are two good weeks to take vacation.
Yep.
And the word, last year got out, so this year, don't go through that area, if you can help it. But actually, they did a really fine job last year.
I think they did a fine job. It did require some pre-planning on the part of people who may be passing through that area to try and avoid it, so.
Right. And because they got the word out, it wasn't the giant mess that potentially, so let's, anyone here for public comment? Okay, I see none. So, let's, we have some miscellaneous items. We have minutes from March 12th. Boy, that's unusual.
Transportation Board hearing.
Right.
Key of hearing from March 12th.
Right. And I have a couple of little edits to that one. We also have the minutes of June 19th. I don't have anything on that one.
I have a, I think I have an edit on March 12th.
Okay, yeah. And then Tuesday, June 26th, I have a small edit also. So, I will move acceptance of the minutes as amended for March 12th, June 19th, and June 26th. I'll add a condition that select person Green has an opportunity to submit changes, if he wishes. So, the motion is to accept the minutes as amended, with the condition, with providing select person Green an opportunity to submit changes. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Hamilton. Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have an application of Phoenix Rising Enterprises Doing Business Best Burger Bar for three alternate managers. Two of the three have been approved by the police department, so the motion will be for approval of two alternate managers, and then the police department has asked for more time on the third. So, I'll be moving Robert Powers and Nathaniel Coyle.
I want to thank Best Burger and our other establishments who go through the paperwork to appoint alternate managers. Speaking just for myself, I always appreciate having it, and I think it gives some flexibility to the manager of record as well.
Right. Okay. So, I will move that we approve the applications of Phoenix Rising Enterprises LLC, doing business as Best Burger Bar John Messia owner at 195 Washington Street, for the following two alternate managers, Robert Powers and Nathaniel Coyle. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have some temporary wine and malt beverage license, so I will move them in omnibus fashion. Move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage sales license to Pine Manor College for a master of arts barbecue reception to be held on Wednesday, July 11th, from 4:30 to 8:15 at 400 Heath Street. I'll move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage license to Alliam Market for cheese education pairing class to be held on Friday, July 13th, from 7:30 to 9:30 at 1330 Beacon Street. And I'll move a retroactive granting of a temporary wine and malt beverage sale, non-sales license, to Pine Manor College for master of fine arts welcome reception that was held on July 6th from 5:30 to 6:30 at 400 Heath Street. And just comment that Mr. Kleckner administratively granted this on the condition of this vote, and I think that was appropriate, given it's non-sales, it's not a controversial item. But I think applicants should be forewarned that they, that this should be an exception.
Can I just mention, Mr. Chair, on the request by Alliam Market, later in the evening, you'll have a request to approve outdoor seating for Alliam, which I expect to be approved at some, at some level. But I would, given that, I think we should make it clear that the request that you approve for a temporary alcohol sales be limited to the interior of the property.
Yeah.
I didn't see a copy of tips cards in the application, so I would just want to make sure that we, we get a copy of those before we grant the temporary approval. I don't think it's...
I see the owners here, so they're nodding, they're nodding yes. Okay.
And I'm sure they've been submitted, they may just not have made it into our packets.
Okay. So, those are the motions, and...
I'll add that the police department has taken a look at all of these temporary applications and sees no reason to deny them.
And then the motion for Alliam is for the indoor, indoor use. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Aye.
Okay. How are we doing? We have...
Rapid fire.
Yeah, we are. Right. We have a building department personnel item. Mr. Simmons, tell us what's happening.
I'm requesting permission, Charlie Simmons, Director of Buildings, to fill three vacancies, HVAC technicians. I've been trying to get these people hired for some time. About a year ago, we did get three people, and it didn't work out. Recently, there's been a change in the pay plan, where we're offering more money, so I'm optimistic we will get people to fill those positions soon. And with this heat, it would be very valuable if we get that filled sooner rather than later.
Right. Especially with the heating season approaching.
And the air conditioning season.
And the air, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion?
So, this, these are multiple positions?
Three.
Three, thanks.
And is this civil service?
No.
No? Okay.
So, the motion should be for three. Okay, so, I'll move that we authorize the filling of three senior maintenance craft persons?
Yes.
In the building department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Have a good night.
Okay. We have a library, Callan Bignoli.
Hello, I'm Callan Bignoli, the Assistant Director at the library. We have four authorizations to hire tonight. This is a mixture of people who've resigned, and we also have one new position. So, this would be for a building custodian, a children's librarian, one, a reference supervisor... Recently, there's been a change in the pay plan, where we're offering more money. So I'm optimistic we will get people to fill those positions soon. With this heat, it would be very valuable if we get that filled sooner rather than later.
Right. Especially with the heating season approaching.
And the air conditioning season.
And the air, right. Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion?
So this, these are multiple positions?
Three.
Three, thanks.
And is this civil service?
No.
No?
So the motion should be for three. Okay, so I'll move that we authorize the filling of three senior maintenance craft persons?
Yes.
In the building department. All those in favor, please say aye, select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the chair votes aye.
Have a good night.
Okay. We have a library, Callan Bignoli.
Hello, I'm Callan Bignoli, the Assistant Director at the library. We have four authorizations to hire tonight. This is a mixture of people who've resigned, and we also have one new position. So this would be for a building custodian, a children's librarian, one, a reference supervisor, and a cataloger, two.
So the, this is actually, one of the positions was a position created in the override as a children's librarian.
Right.
Very exciting.
Yeah. We're happy to have more than one person in the teen room. For various reasons.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
I will ask a question that normally Bernard will ask. You'll cast a wide net, you'll work with HR to.
Yes, we will, yeah.
Okay. So I'll move that we authorize the filling of the following four vacancies in the library department. A cataloger librarian, two, a building custodian, a children's librarian, one, and a reference supervisor librarian, three. All those in favor, please say aye, select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay. And now we have, this is the application of Bright Life View LLC doing business as Megaku Taichi Minio owner for common virtual license. Okay, come on up. And this is 238 Washington Street? And this is the location right around the corner that Yokohama is currently in. So tell us what's going on. What are you trying to do?
Well, I know the owner, Mr. Yamazaki, for about 35 years. First restaurant, I worked in Boston. He was the head chef, and I was the dishwasher in the eighties. And, yeah, and one day we met at Restaurant Depot, and he said, can you buy my place because I want to retire? And that was like two years ago, and, yeah, well, finally, I'm, I'm here to kind of take over.
Yeah, so you're going to be making some changes.
Yes.
So it's a different menu.
Right.
So tell us about the menu, and this is your opportunity to tell the public. Mark yourself.
It's still Japanese. So I own a couple of ramen places in Cambridge, and so it's going to be like similar Japanese noodles, but with a little variation. It's called the champong. It's from the southern part of Japan. And, yeah, it's mainly like seafood noodles kind of thing. And so we're gonna, not many places right now in Boston that does that, so, yeah.
There's one in Coolidge Corner in the arcade that does ramen.
Right, yes, yes.
Though it looks like your menu is a little broader. So now to the business items. Are you going to be doing renovations or anything like that?
Well, first thing is overall cleanup, cleaning up. Yeah, it's not that, you know, they're not like that tidy right now, so just clean up. And then just new equipment, new floor, new ceiling tiles, new wall, kind of pretty much everything new.
Are you upgrading? I know, I see here that you say that the bathroom will be handicapped accessible?
Yes, it already is.
Oh, it already is.
Yes, mm-hmm.
So your current seating capacity is 39, you bring it down to 30.
Yeah.
And your operating hours will actually be a little shorter than the current.
Right.
Are you going to have a delivery business?
Ah, no, no delivery, no, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, it would be an excess, be an issue with parking. Where would you park the delivery car? That would be difficult over there.
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah.
Trash, how are you going to be handling trash?
Well, I'm not sure how it works, but we'll hire a trash company and have them take away the trash like a couple of days a week, yeah. I'll check into that.
If you don't, our health department will certainly remind you.
The animals don't get to it first.
Well, if you have problems with animals, you have bigger problems with us. Questions from the board?
So I want to pick a little bit on the handicapped accessibility, handicapped accessible bathroom, excuse me. If I'm not mistaken, this is an establishment that's up, I think, one or two stairs in the front.
That's right.
So is there, is there a rear entrance that somebody who maybe has some mobility impairments can get in?
No, actually, there isn't. So that's one of the things that the landlord is, you know, didn't give me any clear explanation. But, yeah, it's true, the front is, has like a high step, like two, two steps. But the bathroom is handicapped accessible, so.
So I have, I have the pleasure of sitting on the Towns Commission for the Disabled, and this is a topic that we talk about with some frequency, accessibility of restaurants and other public spaces. I would encourage you to call the Towns Department of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations to talk about maybe some innovative things you could do to help people get in the front door who maybe are in a wheelchair. They make ramps now, temporary ramps that you can just sort of lay over the front steps. So have that conversation, and maybe there's a way to help your business get other clients in who may not be able to access the space now.
Of course, yeah, all right, yep.
I'll note that you did file a trash plan. It's in the application, so two barrels, empty old barrels at least twice a day, more if needed, maintain the sidewalks, dumpsters closed with lock. So, okay. Any other questions from the board? This is not a public hearing, but I'll take any public comment if anyone wishes to comment on this application. And I see none. Are we ready for a motion?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So I will move that we approve the application of Bright View Life LLC doing business as Megaku Taichi Minio?
Yes.
Co-owner for a common virtual or an entertainment radio tape music license at 238 Washington Street, and the proposed inside seating is 30, and the proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. All those in favor, please say aye, select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good luck.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay. And the next item is Allium Market, outdoor seating.
Let me, I think the owners are here and can speak for themselves, and let me just say that we want to accommodate the market, and I think we've been trying to be as flexible as possible for outdoor seating, especially this time of year. And we think this specific location might be a little tight and wanted to suggest some other ways to reconfigure. They are using small tables, so I think it's good. And, but maybe we could ask the applicant just generally their interest in outdoor seating, and then I could go over, look at a couple photos and make a couple suggestions.
Okay.
Sure.
Why don't you introduce yourself for the record?
Hi, sorry, I'm Talia Glass.
I'm Sean Ingram.
We're the owners of Allium Market. We're really excited and happy to be in Coolidge Corner and in Brookline. As the weather turned really nice, we opened in December, it wasn't so nice then, but as the weather turned really nice, I would say a good 60 to 75% of our customers come in and say, when are you getting outdoor seating? When are you getting outdoor seating? And we've, it was something that we hadn't actually really thought about initially. And even in our application to the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association, we had said, oh, no, we won't need any of those tables. But as people started to ask, we really started to realize, okay, this could be something that's really helpful to our business. On top of that, we are limited to our permanent indoor seating count of 19 heads, and we are starting to notice that our cafe happily fills up pretty quickly. And in order to balance out the needs and desires of the community, we have a lot of folks who like to come and work on their computers, and so they hang out at tables. We don't like kicking them out. But then we are finding that we're having a lot of people who come in for lunch, can't find a place to sit, and then leave, and we don't get their business. And as a new business and as young business owners, we need those customers. So we thought that one temporary solution for the seasonal parts of the year would be some outdoor seating. And upon looking at it, we did take a tape measure, and I apologize, I didn't bring a handout. I don't know if you got a copy of the, my very rudimentary map that I drew, but the measurements were accurate, the drawing is not incredible. But it seemed like there was going to be enough space if we use the tables at the Coolidge Corner the CCMA provides. So as we started to look at it, we realized that there might be room for anywhere from three to five tables out there, which could provide us up to 10 more seats, which could actually go a really long way in improving our dining in options for customers who are leaving. So that's kind of what spurred us to, to approach you all about this.
So I would like to just review, so you know the sketch. So the sketch is essentially putting a table right up against the building in the general vicinity of those, those windows, I believe.
Correct.
And if you could advance the photo, Austin. So you'll see that there, where that gentleman is sitting, and there's people walking, that's, you know, that's a tree island, I guess you could call it. You know, I know the dimensions are there, but it just seems very tight there. Would you advance another, well, maybe that's the last photo, go back one then. So my thought was, you know, between where those bikes are and, you know, where that gentleman is sitting, there is that area away from the building. Now, normally, we are concerned if there's food service, especially alcohol service, but in this case, there is none. And my understanding is the food service, people pretty much buy their food and then go find their seats. So I'm not too worried about a lot of server traffic going back and forth. So my thought was to try to fill in as much as we could between those, the bike rack and the tree, tree unit there. And if, using the CCMA's style tables, you know, I think we try to maximize it. I can't tell you exactly how many tables could fit in there, at least, at least two, I think, and maybe.
Would you be willing to approve one in front of the window just to the right of the door?
Or, it looks as though, so I hear your saying and fully agree. Would it be possible to do like two and two, so two in front of the windows that are not where the bench is? And even, so the tables themselves are actually, the setup is much smaller than the width of that whole window, so that's why when we measured, we were like, oh, we can fit five. If we could do even two there against the building, very close to the, like, you can kind of see there's a drainpipe there, just to the right of the drainpipe, two there, and then maybe two where you're speaking of between the, is it between the meter and where the bicycle is, or between where the bicycle is and the little tree island?
Bicycle, bicycle and, yeah. Why don't you, can we look at that other photo again, that side? So, I guess, it's hard to see there, too.
You know, there's a similar situation. Around the corner, we approved.
Regal Beagle?
A few, yeah, Regal Beagle, where we approved the tables on the, on the street side of the sidewalk.
There's no on-street parking, though, in that particular location where the seats are.
And there was alcohol service, so there was, I think this one's a little easier. And, yeah, I think we could try to maximize some seating up against the building, and so maybe the board could allow us.
Well, my concern is where, where the tree curb is, the tree pit, or whatever you want to call that thing, sidewalk narrows down pretty considerably. So that if you have a table, in your diagram, you show there's a table that narrows it down to five, if you have the table, it's five and something feet, and that seems narrow to me. And so the two tables that you have where it's five and a half feet, I think are the ones that are concerned. The others, I think.
That's where the people are walking as well.
Correct.
Sure.
And I think the others, there are three tables where it's not so much of an issue, but those two tables, to me, are the issue.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, you know, now, I think that this bike rack and bench, I can't tell whether there's enough room between the bike rack and the bench to put.
It doesn't look like it.
Pardon me?
It doesn't look like there's enough room to put a table with two chairs.
They're small tables.
They don't have to go this way, they can go this way.
It felt like enough room to put one table and two chairs?
I don't think we'd try to put two, we'd maybe put one.
What I might suggest is the board approve it and give, give staff an opportunity to work with you and experiment a little bit more than, than the proposed plan.
Absolutely.
So are we talking about putting tables and chairs up against the curb, or are we still going to put them up against the building?
I think a little bit, a little bit of both.
A little bit.
So over to the left, where you see the two windows to the left, I think that they're interested in trying to utilize some of that space up near the building. And then we clearly have some space in between the, in the front towards the curb, between the tree belt and where that bike is, that we could try to work in there.
I always get concerned when we're putting tables up against the curb because of people getting out of their cars, not to mention there's some impact on people who may have a wheelchair lift in their vehicles.
Well, these aren't handicapped accessible spaces.
Yeah, but, you know, we approved that down by Dorado Taco down in Washington.
Coolidge Corner Clubhouse.
Kennedy, Kennedy Crossing.
JFK Crossing.
JFK Crossing, and it seems to work over there.
Attentive commission on the disabled meeting, and make it a different.
Maybe it doesn't.
Well, we're really happy to, I mean, one table will be one more than we have now, so we'd be happy with that. We'd be happy with as many as we can fit in while meeting everybody's needs.
I mean, I would agree to the three that are the, not near that five, that, that space where the tree pit, or whatever you want to call that thing, it's tree protection, narrows the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Far enough away so that pedestrians are basically coming, you know, in a little bit, but they're not having to negotiate a narrower.
Absolutely.
Path there. So, and then I think you could work with the staff on another, you know, plan for the others, and, you know, come back to us or whatever, but I think at least that will get you going.
So this isn't a public hearing, but I know there are members of the public who may wish to speak, so come on up.
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening. I'm David Lashinsky, President of the CCMA, owner and operator of Eureka Puzzles, long-term Brookline resident. I have been here before.
Yes, we know.
Many times, and I can tell you, as you know, I share a passion for community. I share a passion for Coolidge Corner, and I realize that today, placemaking doesn't happen by itself. It has to be nurtured, it has to be given room to grow, it has to be given room to be messy. Life is messy. I just came back from Europe, and one of the things that I found there is in these wonderful old center towns, Barcelona, in Prague, in Paris.
Sounds like a nice trip.
It was. Well, Paris was last year, this year was, you know, this, this year was just Barcelona and Prague. But you have these tiny little streets with cafe tables and people enjoying each other, sitting out there, talking and laughing with these tiny little streets. There was one street, I got to tell you, I saw this car going down, it could barely fit in the driveway, you know? It's like it's going back and forth before it actually could fit into the room. And with us all, you had people sitting there and enjoying themselves and enjoying the ambiance, and it was part of what made the place special. What I look at here in Coolidge Corner is a beautiful facade, a beautiful location, an incredible area to attract people. I mean, one of the things that we want to do is make Coolidge Corner a place people want. want to go. The comments that they've heard at Alliam that we hear all the time is, God, it's so great that it's a place to sit down. I could sit and I could meet my friend outside. I can eat lunch. I can grab a sandwich someplace and enjoy the ambiance that it has to offer. That's what we're talking about here. It doesn't mean saying, oh, we're going to have one table, or we're going to have one bench. It means allowing life to be messy and to be enjoyable and for everyone to participate. So my support, very, very strongly, is to have as many tables as we can have. Five tables, six tables, and on top of that, the tables are movable. They're not locked in place. So one of the things that I have found is you don't always know what's going to happen until you try it. So what I think the best thing to do here is a suggestion that I heard, let's put the tables out there. Let's move them around and see where it's going to be the best for everyone. People can easily move around. Having the opportunity for this business to be successful, for Coolidge Corner to become, you know, to stay the jewel that it is, requires that we actively support placemaking, which is what this is all about. So I am very much in favor of and support this particular application, and I'm happy to speak with anyone about it, as well as walk around and see where else we can add these, you know, this, this incredible amenity to our community for both our residents and our visitors.
Thank you, Vasily Lashinsky.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to give staff latitude to work it out with the owner.
I'm happy to do the same.
Staff isn't going to let anything crazy happen. And we just need to make sure we have safe passage.
Would you like us to, like, set stuff up, take photos, take measurements, invite you over to come see?
We'll leave you to work out the details.
Yeah, I think we'll probably, somebody will probably contact you, meet you out there and, and play around a little bit.
Okay.
And, you know what, so I would suggest if the board would approve the amount of tables, but.
Should we go up to five?
Yeah, five with ten.
Subject to staff approval.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll move.
And I would just like to add that, you know, we make sure that staff are aware of the issues of passage by those in a wheelchair and, you know, handicapped.
Absolutely.
Because they take up more room, and it, that is, and, and, you know, it would be hard for, more difficult for a person, an able-bodied person, to walk next to somebody in a wheelchair in that small amount of space. So that's my concern.
Absolutely, we will.
Okay?
Absolutely take that in consideration.
Staff isn't going to approve it if it's not accessible.
And I also just want to point out that, I just wanted to address your comment, which is that all of our classes, thank you for approving the license for our Cheese 101 class, and all of our classes do remain completely indoors, and we have no plans to do otherwise, so.
Do more of them.
We will, yeah, yeah.
And also that their tips was included.
Okay.
Yeah, it should have, I think Chelsea.
It's there. Okay, perfect.
Okay. So I will, I will move that we approve the application of Alliam Market LLC doing business as Alliam Market. Talia Glass, owner, general manager, holder of a common virtual license for outdoor seating of up to five tables and ten seats at thirteen thirty Beacon Street, pending an occupancy permit from DPW.
Well, you do have to get a permit from the DPW, but the specific, I think you should say, subject to specific location approved by staffers.
Subject to specific location approval by staff.
You, you do know that since it's on the public property, you have to get another type of permit. It's, you don't have to go through a board, it's just with the DPW.
All right.
They'll be the same people who come out and visit you anyway.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Will do, thanks.
The hours of operation, I presume these are the outdoor hours, seven a.m., Tuesday to Friday, seven a.m. to seven p.m., Saturday, nine a.m. to six p.m., and Sunday, ten a.m. to six p.m. So all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you so much, and thanks for your time.
Sure, good luck.
Come to Alliam.
Okay. And next up is Lodging House, change of agent to Christopher Berry from David Gloth at seventeen fifty Beacon Street. And you're Mr.
David Gloth.
Mr. Gloth, okay.
Welcome back.
See, you remember.
Looking, you look familiar.
I never left.
That's how we feel sometimes.
Okay, so what's happening?
Just having a new agent, Christopher Berry, taking over, and, you know, he's got some nice background, so I think he'll do a good job.
Okay, so you're continuing to be the owner.
Yes.
So there's no change of ownership.
That's right, yes.
We okay with this? Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Ready for a motion? I'll move that we approve the application of the Lodging House located at seventeen fifty Beacon Street, David Gloth, innkeeper, general manager for change of Lodging House agent, Christopher Berry.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Getting to the end. It's only eight o'clock. Wow.
Eight from the city's morning.
Perfect for a summer.
Okay, so we have.
So that's docked at eight thirty, approximately eight thirty.
It's not a hearing.
It's approximately. Do you want to hang out for a half hour?
Let's just move the eight from the city's appointment up and then.
So we have a suggestion from Mr. Caro for an appointment of this board of Saul Feldman to the Age Friendly City Committee. Mr. Feldman.
I'll take it.
Okay.
So, as you know, you authorized us to, to recruit more members for the Age Friendly Cities. We had some attrition. And Mr. Feldman is a person who's come to some of our meetings. He's a retired real estate lawyer and with a special interest in affordable housing, and that is obviously something we could definitely use. He's, we believe he would be a welcome addition to the, to the committee. And the co-chairs, who are myself for the select board, Ruth Ann Dobek, Council on Aging, and Frank Caro are all, are in agreement that he, his application, he's an appropriate person for our committee, and we would like this board's authority to, to have him be appointed.
So you're adding a tenth member, he's not.
No, no. He, we're replacing people who have, are no longer on, on the committee. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yes, you do.
Oh, right here, yeah. Okay, so we have.
Seven, eight, ten.
Yes, but there were, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted your question. There were citizen members.
Okay.
Who have dropped off.
Okay.
So he would be, we originally had fifteen.
Okay. So there's in effect six open slots right now on this?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know that we will get to that many, but at any rate, we do, we're looking for people who have expertise in certain areas.
So it's, one of the people that's listed on the sheet isn't coming off as a result of Mr. Feldman's?
No, no, no one here is coming off. They're all representative of various segments, so.
Perfect, okay.
Some of them are town employees in effect as well.
Yes.
And Sarah Linalara is the chair of the Disabilities Commission, so.
Any other comments? So I'll move that we appoint Saul Feldman to the Age Friendly City Committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So now we're faced with a dilemma. We noticed the discussion of the statement on family separation policy for eight thirty, and the point was to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on it. We did post it as approximately eight thirty, it's now about eight oh five. We, this has been on the town website for about a week. Select person Green has posted it on Facebook. We've received no comments, there's no one in the audience. In my mind, I'm rather proud of this statement. To me, it's a statement of principle, and I'm just, I personally am totally disgusted with what's happening at the federal level, and I think it's appropriate that we put out a statement like this. I wish we could do more as a government, but we are a local government.
I think it's a great statement. I agree with it wholeheartedly. I, I want to especially thank select person Green, who I know worked very, very hard on this. We had a conversation about this statement two weeks ago, and I think he, he hit the bullseye on the moving target that is redrafted based on feedback from this board sometime, so thank you to him for his hard work, and I think, thank you to, to all of us for, I think, giving helpful feedback, and I'm proud to have it reflected in what we have before us tonight.
I agree with everything you've said, both of you, and I do, and I'm proud that, you know, people are not complaining about this, that's great. It's, it's clear that the public is supportive. I think the majority of the American public is outraged and upset, and, you know, I, but I do have a question about the grammatical structure of the one, two, three, first sentence, first and second of the third paragraph, where it says refugees, immigrants, and asylum seekers are on the, on the southern border, are our people, and we must support them, period, because it's the humane and moral thing to do. And normally, because it's a modifier, and it's not, it really makes that a dangling phrase in essence. So I think all we have to do is, must support them, comma, and with a little b, because it's the humane and moral thing to do. And then another comma, but also because of denial of basic human rights, threat to, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. I can tell you were on the, I can tell you were on the school committee.
No, I had a grim, a sixth grade teacher whom I will never forget, who drilled grammar into me, and I, but anyway, I, I think that's, that would be my only comment, and that's, it's not a content comment, it's a, just a structural comment of the, about the grammar.
I, I will note, I caught a few small typos, which again, are not substantive. There's an extra period in some places, so I, I've got a couple of what I would term scribbler errors that I think we should.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we do this? I'll move acceptance of the statement with the minor, I'll call them typograph, scribblers errors, to be submitted to our recording secretary. And after correction, we'll post, post it on the web.
Perfect.
So just provide the changes to Dawn. Okay, so the motion is to accept the statement with the scribblers errors corrected. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I think we've concluded our business for tonight. We'll be meeting in two weeks.